So we're allowing comments. If you want to come to the front, one minute each since we have a big meeting tonight. Or your comment cards are still open. And I think some people are trying to do that. So I'm going to turn this over to our chief of events. Just over.
Thank you, Mary. So good evening. Jeff Garper with H I S D about P J L. We're Scotts and many with Terrain Group. We're going to present to council the presentation that we shared in the last town hall. As you know, this is our third meeting related to the urban planning. We had the meeting related to the citizen survey. And then we had the meeting last week where we went through these concepts and took public comments. And then this is the third meeting where we will be presenting it to city council and obviously getting more comments from the community regarding these concepts. I'm going to, after we finish the presentation, I'm going to give you a summary of the comments that we got the other night, just so you have a flavor of the comments that we received from the community already. And what I would just keep in mind, what we are looking for is not to pick a lane. We're trying to get feedback about whether or not this idea of improvements in the civic center area is something that the city wishes to consider, whether in the short term or long term. The most important component of this relative to the design of the buildings of the community centers, senior centers, and the library is really the conversation about whether you want those oriented around a new public space like it's light, some of these options that are being considered here. That will help us understand are we designing buildings around a new space? Or are we designing it around the current growth structure that currently exists? That's the short term answer that we would like to get potentially in July. And so that we can move quickly into the design of those projects. And then consideration of doing any or portion of these schemes can happen at its own schedule when the city decides they want to consider this. So that is, that is what we're doing. And like I said, Scott is going to walk through the presentation that we presented the other day. And we look forward to hearing the specific comments from the city council regarding questions regarding any of these schemes. So Scott, I'm going to leave it up to you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much. Mayor Calhoun, thanks for the opportunity to present to you today. This time, I'm going to try to keep this microphone kind of in front of my mouth. So we're very fortunate to have the chance to think about how we create a generational space for West University, a public space, civic space. And that's really at the core of these studies. There was a survey that was conducted, and you may have participated in that survey. The outcome was illuminating. A lot of folks were interested in consolidating a new building to create a new space. More trees, more efficient apartment design, traffic calming measures to improve pedestrian safety, enhanced crosswalks for children, schools, sports, etc., wide recital lots in pedestrian areas, more grassy areas, more passive areas for the homeless and visiting, community gathering spaces for community events, and of course, a portion of other things. And so I think really what we're talking about this evening is the definition of placement. And somebody might ask, what's placement? This is a very simple definition that I think works. Definition is terms, places that are comfortable, accessible, social, and fashionable. That's our quote. And so the principles that we have followed in thinking about conceptual master plans and alternatives are these. That we'd like to create walkable, safe streets. And you know, in Houston, Texas, and you like today, for instance, if you're going to create a walkable street, sidewalks want to be wide enough that multiple people can pass one another, others, toddlers, parents, and families can all enjoy it at the same time. It needs to be shaded, that's kind of important, and lighting, because once it cools off in the evening, it's a wonderful time to walk. There's an option of, particularly in a context like this, of creating complete streets. And that term implies that we use a street by the way to accomplish many things. Move cars, park cars, make it walkable, make it shaded, make it beautiful. And even at some point, think of it as a civic space, that maybe it's managed at points in time for community events, it's closed, and it becomes a great gathering place for the community. And then we have the opportunities to create really wonderful green spaces of multiple scales, you know, internet spaces like these, rare room spaces for larger civic events, all very possible in the context of this site. And we'd like to encourage, you know, all of us to think about how we can introduce green infrastructure ideas into the public realm. What we can do to increase green space, to create space that saturates enough water or absorbs enough water, not just shed. And you'll see how the opportunity to explore. There's wonderful chances to create community gathering spaces, depending on the value of scales and characters. Each one of these three ideas does act in a very different way. And this is also a wonderful opportunity to reinforce, you know, West University's identity as an incredible place to live, a wonderful place to raise a family, a multi-generational space, live your own life, and enjoy it. And also to sort of reinforce the community's identity, preferred place to live, you know, community. And we found that in creating spaces like we have the opportunity to create here, these are going to be multi-generational spaces. And it's very simple to sort of over-design multi-generational spaces. You know, how people use public space in 2024 is going to be very different from how it's used in 2015. And if you over-design it, it limits its use as an open space. So we're big believers in keeping spaces like this simple and sort of timeless. We've, you know, anytime you design something, you kind of want to understand it thoroughly. So this is our assessment of the existing site. I'm not going to go through this in great detail. The site that we're focusing on is the area founded by Auden University College in Rice and dissected by Milton. The property ownership is really wonderful. It, you know, includes City of West University, property and facilities, West University Baptist Church, property and facilities, and residences, as well as public rightsway. And what you see in the diagram is how much of the land area is occupied by public rightsway. The circulation, and you all know this better than I do, is largely two-way, except for Milton and Amherst. Milton's one-way, Eastside and Amherst one-way westbound. Existing parking on streets totals about 224 spaces between parallel parking and parking like parking there often to park overall college. And then there's off-street parking that totals another 68 spaces. So there's a total of 292, you know, parking spaces within this district. So we have been thinking about sort of place-making concepts and going through the process, which at this point, we're at the town hall and city council workshop here today, the 24th. But we're already in, but so we can all be five minutes to try to bring back in the tour. So the first topic we want to talk about is streets. So we think there's the opportunity to rethink the character and technology of the streets within the civic center area. You know, Auden, fronting the park, we think can be transformed into a called Park Street, Park Street, sorry. And I'll explain that in a moment. We think Amherst and Milton could be beautifully transformed into complete streets, which is a place that has an apartment, it's safe, it's walkable, includes jogging, and very bike friendly. College, we sort of prefer that as a people street. Again, it's very safe, walkable, bike friendly, a parallel park. And then Rice and University, the length of that, between college and on the north side of the university and the south side of Rice, we think should be walkable streets, but they're, they're wide sidewalk, shaded, lighted. So basically, they've become a really wonderful walk-in for our citizens. And then, of course, there's things we can do to intercept them, is there a name, crosswalks and things, but to call them. How those technologies would apply themselves over the site is at Auden, the Park Street, Amherst and Milton, complete streets, college, the People's Street, and then the University of Rice, the Central Park Street. We've proved intersections at the point of connection of Auden and Rice, both of those complete streets. So let me describe a little bit about what we think Park Street might be like. So this is an overall plan, and we've blown out a portion of it here in front of the West University Baptist Church. The street section currently is wide enough that we can have a parallel parking on the east side of the park. So people visiting the park, sports, and other activities can.
Angle parking, right? You said parallel parking, not on what angle?
Oh, I'm sorry, angle parking, yes, thank you. Angle parking can make their cars and safety go onto a wide sidewalk that then leads to the park and sports activities. And then there can be a northbound street, wide enough for angle parking to pull in while there's still a southbound lane that allows two-year-old children to go on the line. A drop-off can happen in front of the church, which is very important. And we have beautiful existing trees that obviously want to respect. And the section looks something like this. So this is the existing section. The roadway is 35 feet wide. There's a tall foot parkway on the east side, 13 foot parkway on the west side. By parkway, it would simply mean the distance between the curb and the wide sidewalk on the east side. Within that parkway right now, there's about a seven-foot sidewalk on the east side and a four-foot sidewalk on the west side. But the hope is, the intent is, that we could sort of restructure this within the existing roadway, have a wide eight-foot sidewalk on the east side, angle parking with a series of wider retention planters on its edge, northbound traffic, the traffic line is 13 feet wide, the southbound lane is 11 feet wide, and then a 9.2 foot wide parkway on the west side of the church side. That could be a six-foot wide sidewalk with three second feet of green space, or it could be a wider sidewalk, smaller than that, green space. This is another option that we can consider, and that would be to talk with H I S D about the opportunity of granting these along the east side. This will allow us to make the northbound lane that people are pulling in out a little bit wider, about nine feet wider. Maybe more importantly, you allow the sidewalk along the church, and it's essentially green space to widen, so it's a good sidewalk, I suppose. Something we can see. Complete streets, so again, we sort of think of Amherst and Milton as being an ideal candidate for a complete street. The basic idea is that the sidewalk, the street itself, angle parking, sidewalk on the opposite side are typically, and most successfully, done in a picture of some sort. Angles are important for two reasons. It communicates a human scale and quality. It also slows traffic. A portion of the sidewalk area may want to be a smoother surface for walking events, but in general, it would be beautiful to have that kind of stable texture. So the idea here is to maintain a 20-foot wide roadway along Amherst, and then parallel angle parking on the church side. Within those angle parking spaces would be rows of wide oak trees. So this becomes sort of an O L A, cars are parked and then are shaded. And then there's a drop-off that would happen at the Baptist Church entrance on Amherst. On the opposite side, there would be a very wide promenade, like a 12.2 foot wide promenade. You can have trees, we're suggesting it could be an L A of sycamore or many other things. It'd be a beautiful shaded L A, you can enjoy it. So the section would look something like this. So the roadway itself would be 20 feet wide, maintain a one-way direction. Angle parking, it happens on one side with islands and oak trees, generous eight-foot wide sidewalks along parking. And then the opposite side with promenade would be wide enough for walking, jogging, jogging, and all those other activities. The People's Street is college. The notion here is that within the roadway that we currently have, we can probably do a northbound lane that's 11 feet wide, a southbound lane that's 11 feet wide. Then off of that can be parallel parking. So parallel parking is defined and sort of separate from the travel lanes. That we still have enough space within the roadway to have a very beautiful parkway, about 11 and a half foot wide parkway. And then also have an eight-foot wide sidewalk, wide oak trees, by retention planters and other green infrastructure initiatives. So the section would look like this. So the existing roadway is 26 feet wide, there's a 72-foot parkway on the east side. Within that parkway is a four-foot sidewalk. So the notion would be that we would reconfigure that to have 22 feet of travel lanes, an eight-foot parallel parking space that can be defined off the travel lanes, and then very generous sidewalk, shaded sidewalk for walking and biking. So we explore the idea of shifting the one-way circulation of Milton and Amherst. Do they have Milton with one-way westbound, Amherst one-way eastbound? Debate is just the opposite. Whether that's a good idea or not, we're still exploring. And I think, of course, if I had the other streets, we'd maintain a two-way circulation while Milton and Amherst maintain a one-way circulation.
And Scott, of course, we would conduct a traffic study and all kinds of other analysis before we would come back and consider this as the remedy.
Sure. And then the civic center would end up with a pretty beautiful avenue walkway. Here's a 12.2 foot wide westbound promenade, there would be along the north side of Amherst and the south side of Amherst. There would be a 10-foot shared use path along Auden, maybe if we were able to make an use from H I S D. If not, it becomes an eight-foot wide shared use path. There'll be a six-foot wide shared use path on the west side of Auden, enhanced crosswalks at each intersection, and then accessible crosswalks elsewhere, and of course, the existing 12-foot sidewalks that come down. So then we want to talk about the simple spaces, the sort of next, the next portion of placement. And we've got three ideas of how facilities may be arranged on the side. Is it working now? How facilities may be arranged on the side related to its streets and circulation to create a memorable civic space. This is the first idea, and we sort of call it West U Green. And the notion is that there would be a green space extension from Huffington Park into the space that connects Milton and Amherst. Does it sound, okay. Connects Milton and Amherst. To the left side of that space, to the west side, would be a new library, public, two-story building. To the right side, it would be the Commonwealth Senior Center, Community Center. It would have a drop-off in front door along Milton and a second drop-off in front door of our Amherst. And this could be a very beautiful space, sort of seniorist quality, organic quality, and it would be a series of, you know, sort of social spaces that encourage people to gather and use the space. In this idea, Milton Street would continue through the space, so if you drive down Milton, no matter which direction, people could experience the space. The space also will look similar to Amherst, so it's going to be running down the arch and walking, will experience the space. And then the lot form would look like this. So here's Amherst, Milton, college, and Auden, with a library on the west side of the West U Room, the community senior center on the east side, and a fifth drop-off of Milton, and another common drop-off. Another common drop-off at the rear. And then the second idea that we call the Commons. And it's frankly, a little bit inspired by St. Thomas University, and we've been following St. Thomas. So the idea is that there would be a community senior center that would front Amherst with a drop-off in the front door. People could enter into its own lobby. And then one would be a very large back porch on the north side of these two buildings, a shaded back porch. And then there would be views over along to the library, which becomes sort of the tisstone piece of architecture in the Commons. And those would be connected to each other by covered walkways that connect back to the porch. They also begin to find some outdoor social spaces between the architecture and Milton, and what could be a beautiful garden around the water tank. Milton would extend through and still connect to college, and there would be angle parking that would happen along Milton as well as along Amherst. So in the lot form, here is the community center, an enclosed block that leads to the library with its sort of tisstone piece of architecture in the space, and then the tank and water and gardens and social spaces. And the last idea we call the Town Square. And its notion is that we would place the library as a focal point in the West University across Milton Street and towards Milton Street. And that could happen in many ways, but the basic notion is that when you're looking down Milton, fresh and wide alleys or trees, the view is to a pretty special piece of architecture. If you're on Milton looking east, the view is to a pretty special piece of architecture framing along our public open spaces. The library would be connected to the community and senior center, which would extend south from the job, and that would give us an opportunity for a drop-off here on Amherst to serve really all of the facilities. There could be a very beautiful garden between, a little bit of the location of existing compound, that serves the water tank and the library itself, so this becomes a lean zone for those who are enjoying the library. And then there could be a beautiful trellis that sort of frames this Town Square with activities indoors, something outdoors, and front and forth to.
You want to talk about how traffic doesn't end in till the street?
Yes, thank you. So yeah, so this is kind of important. So this allows us to add very convenient parking to the community center, senior center, and library in addition to the street parking. And people will be able to circulate through the parking lot and connect Milton to Amherst. And it could also be maybe a drop-off here at what could be a pretty beautiful terminal of the campus street. So with lot form, you know, here's the library, sort of spanning Milton, and the trellis that sort of frames the Town Square with the water tank and what might happen to that as a focal point. And then the community center, senior center, which then extends south towards Amherst with its drop-off here, and then very green parking that provides a connection between Amherst and Milton. So these are the three schemes, the side-by-side, for comparison purposes. West U Green, the common, and the Town Square. The civic spaces of each of these are actually very close to one another in the area. The West U Green has the greatest area, the Commons the second greatest area, the Town Square the smallest one. The difference between the greatest and the smallest is somewhere around 4,000 square feet. And just to go back and check how we did it. So the citizen survey said we're going to consolidate the new buildings to create a green space. I think each one of these accomplishes that. More trees, which each one of these accomplishes that. More efficient apartment design, we believe. Traffic calming measures to improve pedestrian safety, yes. Enhanced crosswalks for children, yes, wider sidewalks, and more grassy areas for sure. More passive areas for the homeless and visiting, sort of community building. And community gathering spaces for community access.
Thanks, Scott. So that is the presentation that we prepared and shared at the town hall last week, where we received. And I would tell this, we did tell people that while we are showing buildings in these schemes, don't pay too much attention to the buildings. We had to show buildings to make the schemes make sense. The buildings will, are all the same size in any scheme that we do. They may be a little bit differently figured once we start designing the buildings, but we were really focusing on the open space and the sidewalk strategy in these three different schemes. So there were lots of comments about, you know, why do we have three buildings versus two buildings? And we explained that while we did that, that's not really germane to each of the solutions per se. There was some comments about the proximity of parking to the new facilities. There was lots of positive feedback about having wider sidewalks. There were both concerns and support for the concept of complete streets. There was questions about why do we have the pickup and drop-off places both at the church and at the senior center, and we explained why those are the case. There was support and concern about changing traffic direction on Amherst and Milton. There was also some concern about closing Milton, also some support for that. There were questions about how the, any of these solutions would impact the houses closest to the civic center by inviting more pedestrian traffic next to their homes. There was comments about shade and the need for shade in the open space to make it usable. There was also concern that none, that these schemes, they didn't want, one, make sure there was no traffic impact on the neighborhoods surrounding the civic center. There was desire to have bike racks and E V chargers within this new development. And there was lots of support about crosswalk safety and making that better. And so that's kind of, just to give you a flavor of the kinds of comments that we got, they were both questions and comments about the various schemes, and I felt like we had really good dialogue with the community in the last meeting. We did make the awards available out here in the hall in the meantime, and there were comment cards out here in our. comment cards out here, and I understand there were no new comments that were made. So that is the presentation, that is sort of a collection of the comments. Happy to solicit questions or comments from council and try to address those.
I guess I'll start. For those who don't know me, my placard's facing the wrong way. I'm Matt Harder of the council. I just had a few questions, I guess, about some of your thinking here, more ideas or concepts that may have underlined, you know, underlined your work as it is. One point, first of all, on angled versus parallel parking, when we consider a similar stretch of road length, let's say, which provides, is there a material or significant difference in the capacity for parking provided? Is one considered more pedestrian-friendly or not? Just give me a little bit of background on sort of the experts' take there.
Sure, so Scott Allstar that you can add in. So the idea that angled parking is perceived as safer because you're not exiting into traffic out of one side of the vehicle, in terms of how pedestrians use parking spaces. Generally speaking, between parallel parking and angled parking, we have shown that we think we can pick up a few spots additional only within the same footprint with angled versus parallel parking, there's other factors relating to that. And then in terms of just the flow of traffic, in the way that the recurrent streets are, there's almost like a movement around parked cars that people kind of navigate through, and when people face someone coming the opposite direction, there's usually a stop and you go post-second. I think that making the lanes more consistent and more typical, that that flow of traffic, at least in that area, by making the drivable lanes more consistent and you're not worrying about a door opening out into the traffic lane, I think also makes it a safer condition for that to happen as well. So Scott, if there's anything you want to add to that?
That was great. Let me just add that when there's drop-off. When there's a drop-off activity like there is at West U City Church for children, if parents can pull into an angled parking space, take their child out of the car or themselves out of the car without impacting the traffic, I mean, it's a much safer experience, much more pleasant.
And then dovetailing on that point, as someone who lived on, who lives on the west side of West U and had children attend West U Elementary, and will have at least some in the future, I think, is, one critical part of this, and just wanted to understand how you guys thought of it, is that at 7:30 AM, between 7:00 and 8:00 AM on a given school day morning, and again in the afternoon, the areas of our civic center are part of the traffic circulation for dropping kids off on West U Elementary, especially on a day with inclement weather. How did your, you know, and I, much of my inspiration on council in suggesting that these plans be pursued was a opportunity we had, not only to improve our civic center, but perhaps to expand that area where those sorts of activities could occur. People could drop off on Auden or whatnot or College. And so, give me a sense from your conception, how that fitted in your planning, and what might help on that aspect perhaps the best.
Sure. We talked about it a lot, that people ask me even how often I've been here, and should then answer that question. But we do know that there's a lot of traffic, there's a lot of people dropping off, there's a lot of folks walking, biking through this whole area. And I think that the notion of trying to take these two streets that currently have, you know, less through traffic per se, but make those as pedestrian-friendly as possible so that they become more focused on the ability to have spaces that interact with those, I think was a big factor. And then I think making the sidewalks wider, we've talked about today with the narrow sidewalks, if you have a, either yourself, maybe you're walking with your child and you approach someone on one side, someone's got to stop and step off to let people pass. Or, what I see a lot is that parents with more than one child, maybe with a stroller with one and walking another, that they really need more space in order to walk safely where they're walking alongside their child rather than forcing them to walk in front or behind them. So I think it's a big part of making this area more pedestrian-friendly with that in mind, but also just regular, just, you know, people walking through, you could walk your dogs at night or going for a walk through the neighborhood, having the ability to be able to do that at a completely different level than currently at this.
Maybe to put it more pointedly, as these evolve and we get community feedback, you know, of these three options, which might encourage people to start dropping their kids off closer to Huffington or the library, senior center, and feeling safe enough for them to walk over to West U Elementary or the ball fields to remove this sort of crush on Auden in the morning as it is, and perhaps even on the surrounding streets closer to the school, so.
Just to add into that, the sidewalk we built on Edlow, I think has encouraged a lot of kids to walk, or ride their bike to school from points farther north and through the city, and I think he's looking for the same kind of thing toward the west.
I understand, and I think that that would be the natural result. Now I think each one of these schemes offers a different approach to that, and I think that, you know, as we start to develop the notion of these things, we will zero in in more detail to try to make them be optimal in all those different scenarios. But I think one of the things that is happening, there's different parking places for people that may be wanting to park and then to walk than what you currently have, in terms of types of spaces that you might feel more comfortable if you have an infant and a kindergartner versus if you have a fourth grader and a fifth grader. You might have a different preference for what your situation is, that you would feel like that's okay. And I think that all of these offer different opportunities that might work better for a different age group.
I'll just add, I think, on the idea of putting parking along Auden on the school side speaks to that, right? And if you just park and you're going to walk your child to school, walk that walk, you know, put your partner to school, but it leaves all three of these a lot of comfort.
Appreciate all those responses. I had some smaller questions that I could take up separately, but I think all of these are definitely moving towards concepts I had in mind, at least whenever we thought we were engaging you on the work. Frankly, it's, you know, not that we need decisions today, but I can see virtues of all three of these options, and it's trying to find some voice from the experts as well as the community on helping us simulate what might work best for our situation among three options that in rendering look lovely.
Yeah, and I think that just, what we told the community was that, no, these aren't three proposals, go, take one and do it. These are intentionally three different ideas that could start to have a conversation about, is that a direction that makes sense? And let us go develop that direction to meet, you know, a more targeted, you know, solution based on comments that we get either from the community or from council.
Which one provides the most parking? I hate cars, but we do.
So what's the wording on that counts? All of these schemes would provide more city parking, city-only parking than currently exists today for city parking. Number three has more parking than one or two, I think we think will be pretty much more than existing, but lesser increase, that we think that number three will have a bigger increase just because of this additional density parking right here.
Hello, I'm Shannon Carroll, council member. First of all, I just want to thank you both for your continued work in this process. Just a little bit of feedback that I have, I do really like the idea of the angled parking, particularly along Auden, as a mom who consistently gets my kids out to go to the fields, and someone who parks there to come into this building, I think the notion that, you know, the number of times I've told my kids, get out on the sidewalk side so that they don't have to open a door into the street, you know, I'd be rich if I had a dollar for every time, so I do appreciate that concept. One thing that sticks out to me on the commons, or number two, is that you have Milton as a through street, but the library is on the opposite side of the street, so I'm thinking that just, and some of my feedback would be that I would probably prefer that number one or number three, probably number one concept in that sense, so that seniors, kids, no one is crossing the street there to go to and from the library.
That makes sense, and I think that, I mean, we're trying to show different approaches, and whether they're in scheme one, and if they're all consolidated, but then you don't have to walk out into a vehicle area for buildings, in scheme two you would, right? So we really have to focus on how to be, you know, control the slowdown of traffic there to make it as safe to go through there. And we sort of eliminated that in number three by forcing the traffic to around the area. So three different approaches to that idea, but I would agree with you that idea two does require for people that are going back and forth, they would potentially be crossing vehicular traffic.
So that, so my feedback there is I would prefer a layout where people don't have to cross the street to get to it from.
That's good feedback, thank you.
And then on the third, number three, Town Square, I personally, my feedback is I don't love the notion of a street dead-end there. I just, I kind of see that becoming a blocked, I don't know, I guess people will get used to it eventually, but I don't, I don't love the idea of the street dead-ending there. And then just one question that I had, and this is pretty minor, I think. On number one and number two, what's the difference of the layout around the water tower? What is the bright green as opposed to the green lines?
I wouldn't say I wouldn't pay that close of attention to what it really is. It's really just trying to, the notion of, that we know the water tower's there and the water tank is there, and we need to, we want to embrace it as opposed to turn our back to it. And so how do we, how do we create it so that it becomes part of the space as opposed to ignore that big white thing over there?
Got it, I was just making sure I wasn't missing something in the differences there.
I know we already went into the sidewalks, but maybe we could go back to the slide that shows how wide the sidewalks would be on, just to compare.
I know.
That one, right?
Keep going back.
You want Auden, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
So Auden is the first one, so this is Auden. Can you go one more back, please, Jeff? This one? Yeah, that's great. So if we work within the existing 60-foot right-of-way on, the sidewalk on the left side would be 60 feet wide with a big green space between it and the curb, and then the sidewalk on the school side would be 80 feet wide with this existing fence and gates along the sidewalk, and existing trees along it.
Did we mention, there was one where we mentioned trying to get HISD to work with us on a piece of that?
Yes, that's the next one. If we're able to do that, the walkway on the school side could grow to 10 feet, the walkway on the church side could grow to 8 feet, which would be great, and the lane adding north of that, where angled parking is going now, could widen.
Do you want to give just perspective to everybody how big our sidewalks are that we have on our street, how big the Edlow pathway is, things like that, so they can envision how, how many people abreast this is going to fit, or kids, or things like that?
That's a good point. Existing sidewalks are four feet wide. These will be double.
Five?
No.
Edlow pathways, five feet, and sidewalks are four.
Yeah. So, we'll all, we'll all double the current sidewalks. I think, you know, the norm that you see in suburban communities these days is six feet, that's sort of the norm. It's also related to ADA, but 8 feet would be wonderful, very passable with.
I mean, part of, I think, making a community more connected is you want, you don't want people walking in two directions on the sidewalk to disengage, to get out of the way. You want them to go stop in the sidewalk, side-by-side, have a conversation, hey, how's you going, how's your job, how's your kids, and you're still all in a space that is comfortable, right? And I think that's how you make natural collision spaces for people, so you can create more community.
Social protection.
I have six cards here, it's like from the same person, I just, okay, in a minute, yeah, we can, and John can ask. We have bio-retention planters, I want to describe what those are. I mean, it sounds...
Yeah. It's a basic idea of, instead of runoff on the street or any hard surface, going into the storm circle and eventually doing the rest of that area. Then we put it into a planter, and it is allowed to sit there for a period of time, 24 to 48 hours, and sort of slowly growing away. It's a detention, it's a detention system basically, but by the screen, right, and it's a landscaper at the same time. It's an idea, it doesn't sound...
No, I mean, it sounds fine, I just think someone may have interpreted the word wrong and thought it was open ditches or something. We have John Montgomery, who is our mayor pro temp, he is remoting in, you'll see him up there now. He has a couple of questions himself. John?
Eric, if someone with a microphone, just let me know if you can hear me clearly before I start.
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to thank you guys for going away and coming back with, largely, I think what we set out to do here, which was greater connectivity between public use areas that exist already, greater safety for pedestrians in the areas that we expect the potential for higher pedestrian traffic and areas where already exists. So I'm supportive of everything I see on Auden and on College, and I think in their own way, each of those three concepts for the, for the public green space area between the buildings increases connectivity to some degree, maybe some more than others. I don't have a, I don't have a strong preference for any of them. I guess, I guess, you know, and I'll get to this point in a minute, but assuming at equitable cost, the idea of kind of that pass-through space in what I think we're calling the Commons, no, I'm sorry, the West U Green appeals to me. I'm not bothered by the idea of Milton not being a through street, but I'd like it to be a pedestrian, pedestrian through street, if that's possible. You know, I think the connectivity works as long as that's a pedestrian through street. It doesn't end up being a vehicle through street, that doesn't bother me so much. I touched on a little bit, I know this isn't a meeting to select an option, so we don't have costs in front of us, but, you know, that's an important item, and I think what you meant, most of the objectives here that we set out to talk about and explore, I think the hard part is going to be, you know, how much we're adding to the overall scope of what we're trying to do with the facilities master plan here. So I'll be particularly interested in more detail on, you know, estimated adjustments to cost on the buildings to fulfill with, you know, one of these options. I guess it's almost too big and important item for me to make any kind of decision on in the vacuum of that, so I can indicate a preference here tonight on the green, but I had a hard time going any further than that until I knew whether or not this is impactful significantly more than the others on cost of buildings. But otherwise, I have support about it. I think that the experience on the Edlow pathway taught me especially, that this is something the community wants, and then when they have access to it, they'll take, take great advantage of it.
My only gripe with this is that we didn't necessarily find a way to maybe extract a little bit more out of Friends Park in this, in this scheme. I don't know that there's a lot we could do. You know, I'd be interested if there's more ideas to open that space a little to the wider sidewalk we're going to do among Auden. You know, I like the park, I think it's valuable to us, I like doing the tree lighting, but I feel like we could possibly do more there. And I'm interested if there's some solutions there to alleviate some of the congestion around the school or connect kids to the school better than we currently do. Maybe we could work with HISD on it, on walking back and get some through that park to school more easily than behind the ball fields, which is kind of unofficial path right now. So those are my thoughts, absent the elephant in the room, which is cost and planning. But I appreciate the work done here, and I'm encouraged that it tackles kind of the safety, connectivity, and greater green space kind of objectives that I think we set out to do.
Thank you for that. I think my assumption is that depending on if one or all of these survive tonight, that we would come back to your delighting with some realm numbers or pieces of this, so it's not like, you know, a whole number of, you know, the street part of this is such and such.
Explain what a realm is.
So rough over magnitude cost, so that we would come back and give you some kind of budget information based on what we know right now about what a solution for this piece, like what would it take to add this kind of a piece, if that's all you wanted to do? What would it take if Auden was your priority? What is, you know, cost of that? You know, what is the cost to make improvements on them? So you can kind of take it in digestible pieces for each scheme? Because again, we're not presenting any of these as, here's a complete answer. We're trying to get an idea and give you enough budget information at a high level that you can decide whether that makes sense or not even with the economics.
And Joseph, if you could cover about kind of how this could be phased? I mean, you could, if the price was right, you could swallow the whole elephant, or it could be broken into phases, but knowing the plan allows you to. You mentioned this earlier, Joseph, if you'd refresh?
For sure. And sorry, just so your response is complete, I mean, what, and maybe you'll tell me it doesn't matter, but among these options, what affects the cost of the building? I think at one point you mentioned each of the buildings of the library, community, senior center are similarly sized, but to the extent there's an impact based on the choice here of, I don't know, this library and community senior center look kind of Frank Gehry and curved-esque. I don't know if it makes those more expensive to construct or something.
Well, again, I would ignore those shapes. They're there just to give...
Sure.
...scale. But I would, I would say that, you know, for example, if, if we said, if the city said, and I'm just going to use this scene, and said, the city said, what do you need to do absolutely minimum in order to get the library, community center, senior center done, complete and usable? And I would probably come back and say that basically you just need to commit to that piece so that these buildings are designed with some idea that there's a central space and that when the buildings are open, that the building occupants can use those spaces. Now, something like that would be the baseline minimum. And then if you said, okay, well, could you do the roads back to here? Of course, right? So it's just really about what are the digestible pieces? And I would say this, because this community has gone through a road reconstruction phase over the time I've been here. So you know what happens when you're taking down parts of roads to mobility. I would not recommend tearing up all these streets at the same time. That would not be anywhere close to a recommendation. So you would want to take a reasonable approach to phasing the improvements so that the quality of life of the community is, you know, as good as possible during the process. Not to want to stretch out for 20 years necessarily. But I think we really want to look at a phasing approach that makes sense.
I just wanted to add one more comment about the green concept that I forgot, which is, it seems to be the only one that would, would kind of shield the larger type of view while, while kind of residents enjoy green space. And assuming we can figure out what to do with the smaller one in a way that also minimizes that presence, I think that's positive, this solution.
Yeah, the other two students would rely on landscape to solve that.
He said we could rely on landscape to solve that. Your mic was off.
Oh, sorry. I just mentioned the other two students relying on landscape to provide that. This one relies on architecture and landscape.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
I'm curious, a quick question. At one point, there had been discussion about some sort of, and I don't mean to open an entire can of worms here, but a bridge or some form of walkway to connect Huffington Park into this? Has that been any consideration in any of this?
Or some kind of wider, I never heard bridge, but I, a way that people could cross from that way, so it was more of a, I mean, not really sharing the street, but people can cross it that way without getting hit.
I think that came from me where we talked about you can do. And so kind of the, well, first, the scope of work that was directed was the civic center. And because Huffington falls outside of the civic center, we didn't really go there. But as we developed some concepts, just kind of like Mayor Portem mentioned, Friends Park being maybe included, we can also look at ways to include Huffington Park. And I think there's where I said, you can do, it's kind of like a table. You raise the height of the roadway, which will slow down cars. But it also, you can, you can put chicanes or narrow the street crossing there. So it makes the crossing of the roadway a lot shorter, but the physical design geometry of the roadway will slow down cars.
Shannon wanted to know if you could put an open tunnel under there.
So, I mean, so is that, is that a comment to look at possible ways of incorporating? I mean, was somewhere done to that?
Yeah, I mean, I think we know that park is there, we know this one's here too, right? This one, obviously, for the location, makes sense to try to...
Totally, conceptually, the, not, not obviously on scale that it's been done in Memorial Park, but if you tried to create kind of a park and bridge, and maybe someone just made that comment, I didn't hear it clearly. Is that, you know, on the, on the auto, just because we're speaking conceptually here, on the, on the scale, cost, is that about the most expensive thing we just think of?
I suggested it, but it seemed like it would cost a lot.
Yeah, so just to make sure, I'm saying, you're talking about taking pedestrians up over conflict traffic or traffic down underneath?
Not traffic down underneath, maybe people down there.
People above.
Yeah, like if your building elevated park space over that section of block the way Memorial Park has been connected over Memorial Drive, which is obviously a much bigger, more ambitious project, but, you know, yeah, effectively, I'm not, I'm not saying it's within the scope of this in terms of cost, but I'm curious how expensive is that to do something like that? To create a park over the street that would extend Huffington into the West U Green, if possible?
We haven't looked at that idea yet. We're happy to explore it. Mike, that tells me it's a really small space to try to take people up and over without impacting the micro neighbors.
To create this clip on both sides, I mean?
Potentially. I mean, we just need to look at it, but it's a really small space, right? And we want to make sure that it's positive and all aspects.
Well, and my comment was more in a, kind of a grand scheme of we're looking, and we are, at making things more walkable, greener, safer for pedestrians. Just, it makes logical sense to make a C, to me, to see how we can tie both Huffington and Friends to the design.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, and then I guess the last thing is to kind of match point. I mean, originally this came out of a discussion on Wesleyan, and connectivity was kind of the initial driver. But I know this is a civic area, is the scope of the conversation, but I'd like to keep, maybe this is a comment for council, but I'd like to keep thinking about ways that we, you know, we think of a corridor all the way to Colonial, you know, and it doesn't have to be, you know, one that changes street direction or intersections or anything, but maybe the idea of wider sidewalks in a corridor that creates, you know, a clear, encouraged route for pedestrians kind of between our two big public areas that kids would naturally gravitate to and families would feel safe from, whatever traffic, uh, traffic calming measures we need to put in place on large streets in between. But I hope that we keep this as the beginning of that kind of conversation in our planning as we keep looking forward.
Thank you, John. That was my thought with the whole bringing an urban planner in for this is not just trying to patchwork where people are walking now, but direct it in a thoughtful manner.
I suspect if we execute this well, this will become a model for what people would want. Think the obvious, I suspect if we execute this well, this will become a model like the pathway, Edlo pathway has become to what people expect or have future visions on in future projects. So it's incumbent on us to get this as right as we can, for sure.
I think that's our comments for the evening. Jeff, if you have anything else?
So, do you got anything? No, I think this is good information for us. What I, and I think what I heard is, you didn't say, we don't want to do any of these, we just now help us understand what that means and so that you can factor in economics and timing into any conversation about whether you're still interested or not. But I would just echo that all the things you talked about, about making West U more connected pedestrian-wise, you really have to start here, right? It has to start here for it to be successful in other places, in my opinion. So I think this is the right time to be investigating.
Thank you, everybody, for coming this evening. We'll be around to talk to you afterwards as well. Thanks. Don't motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.